Yeah.
I feel like I'm planning a wedding. My daughter.
Yeah, but now that I'm planning the wedding. It's a little different.
Definitely gonna have a wedding if she feels like.
I would like to call to order the April 9th regular board meeting of the Moundsview School Board. Good evening and welcome. The first item of business is 1.2, adoption of the agenda. I would entertain a motion.
Still moved.
Second. The agenda has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so this evening, we're very excited to have student recognition with the winter activities from both Moundsview High School as well as Irondale High School. And I'll let Mr. Galvin kick it off for us.
Thank you, School Board. I'm Jim Galvin, Activities Director at Moundsview High School. Irondale's AD, Chris Fink, is here as well, but feeling a little under the weather, so he's letting me take the group here in charge. Thank you for inviting us tonight. Both of our schools had an awesome winter season. We had two teams compete in state tournaments. We had over forty individuals between the two schools compete at the state level. And this spring has been off to a fantastic start. Again, we've got, I think, eight, or no, four teams right now rated in the top ten. And both of us are getting ready to send, I believe it's eight different activities to national tournaments here in the next month. We're looking forward to our, our spring musical and plays at our schools. And we've got some great students from our winter activities to talk to you tonight. Avery, come on up.
Hi, my name is Avery Dox. I am a senior at Moundsview this year. This last winter season was my fourth year on the Moundsview-Irondale gymnastics team. We had a great season. We have a super young team, so I'm really excited to see what leaders will come out of that and what they'll do in the future. And we also had the honor of accepting the Section Academic Award, which was a huge deal. And then I was able to go to the state competition and where I placed sixth all-around and second on vault.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Hi, we're from Moundsview Science Olympiad, and we're all seniors here. We're captains. So this is Kylie, I'm Ellen, and this is Michael. And we've all been involved in Science Olympiad since fourth or fifth grade.
So yeah, for those of you who might not know what Science Olympiad is, it is a program that helps introduce young kids to all the STEM activities and STEM topics. So a lot of it is teamwork. You're working with partners, and it really helps bring that collaboration aspect into the STEM field.
Yeah, and this year, we've had, we've done really great. We've had spectacular showings at all of our invitationals. And we recently just won the state tournament. So that is really exciting. And we are currently preparing for nationals. And we're doing that by, of course, studying, getting like more like funding as well, by fundraising, of course. And yeah, that's all we have to say about the Science Olympiad team. Thanks for listening to us.
Right. Congratulations.
Hi, my name's Ethan Swanson, and this is Joey Muehlstein and Colton Leween. We're all juniors of the wrestling team, and we're all gonna be captains next year. And a lot of us are just, we're really excited to leave next year. And we have had a lot of success. And we've all been together for like ten-plus years. And we have a bunch of kids that join, and we're, we love to have new people join wrestling. We had thirty-plus freshmen join this year. We even had to add two practices because of how many people joined. And yeah, we're really excited for next year.
Yeah, my name is Joey Muehlstein. Just like for some of the team's success, the past two years, we were sixty-one and two. The past two years, with year before, we'd been thirty-one and one. We fell in the section title match. But this year, in the state title, we fell again in the state title match, but it was the best season we've ever had as a team. We went to Rumble in the Red in Fargo. We won that. And we also went to the prestigious Christmas Tournament in Rochester, and we also won that by twenty-five points.
I'm Colton Leween. And this year, some state records that we had. We had eleven state entrants, which was a school record, six placers, which was also a school record. And we have five of those six returning. It was the first time making it to state as a team since 2007. And our team GPA average was three point five seven. And Joey here got academic all-state.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Hello, I'm Miles Smith. I'm a senior from Moundsview, and I'm a captain for the Nordic team there. We had a very good season this year. Both teams did really well compared to past years. Our guys' team took second in sections. Our girls' team took third. And what that meant for the guys' team is we got to go to state for the first time, I think, since the nineties. It's been at least two decades. So that was really cool for us. And then, just an honorable mention, Linnea Ostigian. She joined us as a freshman this year, and she was the conference section Masabi East Invite and also the U-16 National Champion for Nordic skiing. So it's her.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Hi, I'm Anthony Petkov from Irondale. I do the Alpine skiing. And I won state this year. And I would like to contribute my successes to a great coaching staff, great teammates, and a great AD. I think we haven't had a state winner for Alpine for Irondale in like a while. So yeah, that's what I'd like to say. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Hi, I'm Johnny Slack.
I'm Cody Gashin.
I'm Jay Lehman.
And we are the captains for the Irondale baseball team. We haven't obviously had our season yet, but we just kinda wanna talk about our trip to Florida we had a couple weeks ago. It was really fun, and we got a head start in front of a lot of the teams because they're all stuck in the gyms, and we got live reps there.
Piggyback off what Johnny said. I think that Florida trip was a great experience. We, it got us really prepared for the first win. And like Johnny said, a lot of other teams were stuck here in the snow and practicing in a gym while we were outside practicing on a field, playing games.
On top of all of that, just the overall memories that us boys were able to create with each other, the bonds strengthening, just really cool experience, so.
Awesome. Good luck.
Hi, I'm Nick Anderson. I'm a senior from Irondale, and me and Natalie are both captains of the speech team. So I wanted to take a moment to recognize the many accomplishments of the speech team this season. First off, this year, we had fifty-five students, which is a lot. But it's a lot more considering the fact that we had twenty-eight students the year prior and twenty the year before. And when I started as a freshman, it was only eighteen. So the team has grown exponentially. On top of that, we participated in ten invitationals. And we were recognized as the first, in first place, of the Suburban East Conference, with six of our students being recognized as all-state champions.
Yeah, so hi, I'm Natalie. Like Nick said, I'm also a captain of the speech team at Irondale. And in addition to being first place in the Suburban East Conference, we also got second place in our section for double-A. And we, twelve of us, finalled in the section meet. And then five of us are going to state in a couple of weeks on April twentieth. Yeah, and we've just had a really great season this year. Like Nick said, exponential growth. And yeah, it's just been a really great season.
Great.
We also had five students qualify for the national tournament. And that will be taking place, taking place in Nebraska, in Bellevue, Nebraska, to be specific, in May.
Great. Wonderful. Congratulations. Well, thank you so much for being here. I know we do have a few seniors. If you'd like to share what you're thinking for next year, feel free. If not, it's okay. But is there anybody that would like to share?
I can. I'm gonna be attending the University of Arizona and studying neuroscience and.
Great. All right.
I'm gonna be skiing at Northern Michigan as well as studying mechanical engineering.
Great.
I'm gonna be playing baseball at River Falls and.
Great. Any other takers?
I'm going to UCLA on the pre-med chat.
I'm gonna be going to Stanford for biomechanical engineering.
I'll be attending Harvard.
Wow. Any others?
I will be attending UW-Madison and studying history.
Awesome. All right, well, thank you. If there's no others, thank you. Oh, one more, sorry. Oh, hi.
I am a senior. I know I don't look it. So I'm gonna be attending the University of Minnesota, and I'm going to be going for pre-vet med.
Good. That's great. Any others before I? Okay, well, thank you so much for being here tonight. This is one of our favorite evenings to have all the students come in that participate in activities and athletics. Congratulations to all of your successes. Good luck on your competitions that still remain, and good luck to all your spring seasons. So thank you. And if you would like to stay for the meeting and join us, you're more than welcome to, but you might wanna go out and enjoy the nice night.
Thank you. Nice job, guys.
All right. So moving on, we are going to move to item 2.2, Student Representative Reports. And I see we have our Moundsview rep here. Do we have Irondale as well?
I did not see any reps.
Okay, perfect.
I think maybe this is the bike.
All right, perfect.
Well.
Hi, Alton, how are ya?
Good, how are you guys?
Good.
So as Mr. Galvin mentioned, we had an extremely successful winter season at Moundsview. But I'm so excited to have our spring sports and activities in the way. Like Mr. Galvin mentioned, we have many of our spring sports. We see them going into state and doing really well, along with our theater program. We have Cinderella this spring, which we're excited to see. So just a few highlights for sports. Tractor Field has started, and they've had lots of wins as of now. I think they won Intermediate Mankato. They swept all the events. A Greek Invite at the U of M as well. And they have many more coming up. Baseball and softball. Sorry, one second. I have it in my notes. Baseball and softball have also started their seasons. And the boys' baseball team won their home opener at Rogers. And the girls are playing right now against Park. And I don't know how well they did, but hopefully they did really well. So Moundsview Student Council's focus right now is our prom. And our theme this year is Under the Sea, and it will be held at the Minneapolis Event Center. And one fun thing we're doing right now is we're gonna have students submit their promposals on Instagram, and then they get to vote who has like the best one, the funny one. I think it's a good incentive to get all the students hyped up for prom. Our Best Buddies Group, they hosted a Day of Belonging event at Moundsview High School, where they wanted to celebrate inclusion of other students. And they aim to promote a school community that embodies belonging for all of the students. They had food, activities, and students get to pledge their inclusions. It's really a fun event to see everyone come. Music for Moundsview also happened last month. Again, like I mentioned previously, this was a benefit concert. A lot of great performances from our students at Moundsview. And I also wanted to shout out Moundsview Viewer. They recently went to a trip. They went to a journalism convention, I believe it was, I forget where it was. But they got recognized as the eighth-best student newspaper in the nation. Be part of that.
Oh, that's great.
I also wanna highlight our DECA team. We have three DECA students who are nationally recognized by DECA as Emerging Leader Honor Award recipients. And Moundsview's own Miriam Shakan has been chosen as the next president of Minnesota DECA. We're pretty proud of our teams this spring, and we can't wait to see what they have.
Oh, great.
Oh, awesome.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much, as always, for being here. We really appreciate you providing these updates. So thank you. Enjoy your night.
Thank you.
And enjoy your time.
All right, we will move on to item 2.3, Gifts. Shauna, would you please read the gifts?
Yeah, so there were four gifts for schools and programs received this period for a total of $4,220. There were also nineteen gifts received for the Ralphreyder Food Shop this period for a total of $64,020.33. It's recommended that the board accept these gifts and extend our thanks to the donors.
Great, thanks, Shauna. Upcoming meetings, we have a regular school board meeting on Tuesday, April 23rd, at 7:00 PM here at the district center. And then we have our work session at 5:00 PM on Thursday, May 2nd, also here at the district center. So next, we will move on to Agenda Item 2.4, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Diane. In the spirit of ongoing recognition, we have quite a few things we wanna celebrate and share with the public this evening. To start with, I am very proud to be able to announce that we have a 2024 Teacher of the Year finalist. Michelle Morris went from Turtle Lake Elementary, was selected as one of twelve finalists for the Minnesota Teacher of the Year Award. The finalists will participate in interviews. They've, they've gone through lots of vetting. And over the next several weeks, eventually will be narrowed to one winner, who will be announced at the Teacher of the Year banquet in May. So congratulations to Michelle. And we wanna make sure that she knows that we're wishing her all the best as she moves forward in the competition. I also wanna let people know that for the twelfth consecutive year, Moundsview Public Schools won the Best Communities in Music Education Award. This award is sponsored by the National Association of Music Merchants. And Moundsview is one of only nine districts in the state to win the award this year. I wanna extend a huge thank you to all of our music educators, without whom this award simply just would not be possible. So thank you to all of them for all they do for our schools and our students. I also wanna let you know that this year, we're proud to announce we have three Metro Athletes of the Year. They are Anthony Petkov, who you saw earlier. Anthony was here, Irondale Alpine Skiing. Linnea Ostigian, Moundsview Nordic Skiing. And Quinn Morgan, Moundsview Wrestling. I just wanna make sure we publicly congratulate these three outstanding athletes for their accomplishments. Our high schools have also selected their Athena Award recipients for the 2023-24 school year. They are Siri Stolen from Irondale High School and Audrey Coken from Moundsview High School. Siri and Audrey were selected based on their excellence in academics, athletics, and community involvement. We wanna congratulate Siri and Audrey for these wonderful awards. And DECA, I got beat to the punch on this one a little bit with our student rep, Alton. But I do wanna mention, our DECA program has been tremendously successful. Three students being honored as emerging leaders. Sand Handelsman, Yowande Lawal, and Ella Westerman all were recognized as emerging leaders. Specifically, recognized for demonstrating community engagement, professional responsibility, and exemplary leadership. So congratulations to all three of them. And as Alton mentioned, Miriam Shakan was elected as the Minnesota State DECA president. So the top honor in, in Minnesota for DECA. First time that we had a student elected to that post. So publicly wanna thank Miriam on this outstanding accomplishment as well. And finally, just because it's upcoming, we're a little ways away out here, but May 6th to the 10th will be Staff Appreciation Week. And I bring this up because I want people to know, you can start getting ready to send those appreciation personalized E-cards to staff. Last year, more than 3,000 E-cards were sent to deserving staff members in recognition of their efforts. This year, we hope to eclipse that mark and make sure our, our staff know just how appreciated they're, they are. So thank you to anyone who will be participating in letting our staff know how much they're appreciated coming up early May. And with that, I'll end my report.
Great, thank you, Superintendent Lennox. We'll move on to item 3.0, Approval of the Consent Agenda.
Approval.
It has been approved. Seconded?
Seconded.
Agenda has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is item 4.1, Policy Review. So as part of the school board's ongoing policy review, tonight, we are bringing forward the zero-one-hundred series of the board governance policies. There are a total of fourteen policies in this series. Both board members and administration members have had the opportunity to review all of them independently, as well as collaboratively at our work session last Thursday, April 4th. At this time, there are no recommendations for revision, and therefore, no action is necessary by the board. We do want the public to know that these policies will be recorded, as reviewed, and posted to our website. Also, the intent of the board is to form a subgroup or task force to complete a comprehensive policy review moving into the next school year. So it's been a while since we've had a comprehensive review. So at the work session, we decided that this was a good time to do that. So you will hear more about that in the future. So that will end my report there for policy review. Item 5.1, we'll welcome up Julie Coffey, Executive Director of HR, Termination of Probationary Staff.
Good evening. So this is action that we bring forward every spring. And Minnesota statute defines the probationary period for all teachers. And during that probationary period, non-renewal can happen for any reason, including performance, budget, staffing reasons, and sometimes licensure reasons, too. So a probationary teacher is deemed to be re-employed for the ensuing school year if they are not notified before July 1. And so the board has to take action on that. We're taking action now in April to meet that deadline, as well as give teachers sufficient opportunity to pursue other employment options. All teachers recommended for non-renewal this year were notified by their principal prior to tonight's action. And so tonight, we're asking the board for approval of the resolution in front of you and the non-renewal of probationary teachers.
All right, thanks, Julie. Any questions for Julie? All right. So I'd entertain a motion that the teachers listed in Attachment A be terminated pursuant to the attached resolution.
Still moved.
Seconded.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Julie. All right, next up, we have our District Operational Plan Goal update. Superintendent Lennox will be giving an update on our high school activities and athletics programs.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, this is an opportunity for us to update not only the board, we had a chance to talk a little bit at the work session, but the public on, on the progress of our DOP goals. Specifically tonight, I just wanna share some of what's been done around activities and athletics. If you recall, the purpose of this goal really was to do a comprehensive review. And so we, we went through, looking at all of our, our programs and activities and athletics focused on our two high schools. We wanted to identify areas where we saw strengths, maybe some opportunities where we could see improvement. And then, in the end, our intention is to make some recommendations for how we could improve the, the student experience across both of our high schools in the district. So lots of data collection, literally spreadsheets with multiple tabs that have grown and grown and grown over the time as we've been collecting this data. What we did is identified, if you recall at the beginning, some priority areas. So I won't go through all of those, but things like reviewing the total number of offerings at both schools. So we looked at what's being offered at Moundsview, what's being offered at Irondale, and obviously are, are collecting all of that information. The other thing we did is we really looked at the, the classification of what's being offered. So for the public, there are things that are offered that are sponsored by the Minnesota State High School League. Often very competitive, usually organized, not only across a conference, but across the state. There are state tournaments or performances, if it's in arts or activities, that happen every year. So highly organized. There's another layer that is non-high school league activities and variety of things. Could be jazz band. But these are the things that have an advisor attached to them. Student interest can be competitive, but aren't always competitive and have opportunities for students to perform. And then there are clubs, so kind of that lowest level, which is really formed around student interest. So it could be a comic book club or an art club, a gardening club. Students often self-organize around this. So those clubs are supervised, but not always advised, meaning an advisor assigned to them. Lots of them can be self-organized and, and meet on their own schedule. One of the things we realized as we were going through, kinda doing all of this review, is that there's, there's another level that exists. So not quite high school league level, because the high school league not sponsored, but there are activities that are highly competitive. So they're not activities, they're kind of in-between. Ultimate Frisbee is an example of that. Highly competitive, competing against other high schools, other districts across the state. That's an area that, moving forward, you'll see as a recommendation, that we would look to make sure that that's a level of competition that's, that's more flushed out as we go forward and we're working with those activities and athletic teams moving forward. We also looked at participation fees and participation numbers. So what are people being charged? And how many kids are out for different sports and activities? We're also looking at trends. We're also looking at trends, you know, are we seeing activities where numbers are going up, or activities where numbers are going down, and tracking all of that across both of our high schools. We then started looking, I know one of the things we talked about with the board is alignment. So are opportunities being offered across both schools so that kids can access them? And in large part, I would tell you, if we're offering an activity at one school, it's also being offered at the other, and if there is only one, like a marching band, it is offered so that kids can cross over and participate from the other school. So we really are taking a look and making sure that that is available to anyone who might want to participate in all of the activities or athletics we offer. In addition, we looked at like-size high schools, and I'm happy to be able to report, we're really comparable to other schools in terms of what we're offering. There are very few activities, some when you get into what we might not offer, and others might, are unique. So as an example, Stillwater has an equestrian team. We don't have that, but that's not something we, our students or staff, parents have called for either. So unique as we look at that, but if you think of all of the high school league activities, and generally the activities or arts you'd think of, we're doing a really nice job of being comparable with other like-size high schools. We then talked a little bit too, and looked at the philosophy of participation by level. Now you might think, why would we do that? Well, we think it's important because it really becomes from a middle school, if you will, introductory, where kids are just getting a sense, exploring, or exploratory in terms of activities, arts, and athletics. And as they have experience, they begin to develop more skills, so it starts moving into more developmental, certainly into eighth, ninth grade, tenth grade, where you're developing skills and preparing for more competition, or a more competitive aspect of the high school league. So JV, varsity are truly formed around competition, and those are times where you may see certain number of students are, or you can only have a roster of so many, so it does get competitive, and you may have to make cuts at that level. But at the lower levels, we want development, and we talked about this because we didn't want a sixth grade activity becoming highly competitive, and we're going to cut sixth graders and not let them have an opportunity, when in fact, the whole point of that activity was to introduce them to a sport, an art, whatever, so they have an opportunity to develop those skills, and if they want and choose to, be competitive finally at the varsity level. That was important and something that we'll carry through and make sure that our students are aware, our coaches are aware, our parents are aware of that philosophy as we move forward. We have collected parent and student experience feedback. That exists for activities, certainly ninth, twelfth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade. One of the things we're engaged in is ongoing conversation about the intentional use of that data. What we want to do is be able to use that to develop our programs, to say, where are we strong, what's going well, build on those strengths. Also, where is it that we could get better? And use that to develop our programs, the offerings, talk with coaches around professional development, talk with student leaders about how we can make these better. So we are looking to use that feedback in the future, collect more, and be more intentional in the use of the feedback we have with our programs moving forward. We've also looked at professional development opportunities for our coaches and advisors. You've heard us talk, and certainly the ADs talk a little bit about the Inside Out program. It is sponsored by the National Football League, and really has been a model program, a very successful in other school districts, high schools across the state, and across the nation. Really, we see that as a model that can be used to develop our coaches and advisors moving forward in the future. It also has some training components that can be used with our students, athletes, and participants as well, so we think that's another nice addition to that. So again, as I come around to some of the recommendations, you'll see us recommending that an effort be put forward to expand that for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and beyond. We've also looked at and evaluated opportunities for student leadership development. We have had students from both high schools that are involved in the Minnesota State High School League Leadership Program, that's called Together in Partnership, so both of our high schools have had students engaged and participating in that. In addition, through the Suburban East Conference, we've also done, both high schools have done leadership development and opportunities for some of our captains and student leaders within the conference, and both high schools are also doing some local leadership development with students. But if you asked, and by the ADs were here, they would have told you, we'd love to do more of that. So I think there are some opportunities that they'd like to see, and we'd like to provide to broaden and extend leadership opportunities for students in activities and athletics moving forward. And then finally, and as the board knows, we really started digging into conversations with outside partnerships, specifically city partners, who are interested in partnering with us around fields, facilities, and opportunities. Carl Brown, who's our community ed director, is in conversations with the Parks and Rec staff for many of the cities. What we want to do is make sure we're providing opportunities and not duplicating efforts, but also not leaving gaps. So what are you doing, what are we doing, and how can we all come together to create a well, variety, breadth of opportunities for our students to participate in at all different levels of programming? Our booster clubs also have been key players in this conversation. We've had a number come forward, engaged in, so what could they do, and how do we partner with them as well on resources? Many have asked about opportunities, again, that fields and facilities conversation with the city, where they could engage, could they participate in those conversations as well, and I think there's really some opportunity there, and we're excited about what might be possible as those conversations continue to expand. So that's a little bit of all of what we've collected through this goal. Next steps really are getting to collecting all of that, writing up our final report, highlighting some of the recommendations and areas that we think are strengths, and we wouldn't want to lose those, but also areas where we think we could improve the experience for our students. So all of that will be pulled together and included in a final report on this goal, and then included as part of the larger overall DOP review end-of-year report that will be submitted to the board and the public. So that's a quick update of lots happening, lots of data, again, getting through all of this, and just appreciate the opportunity to provide the updates to the board and to the public this evening. Thank you.
Well, and as you stated, we talked about this in great length at our work session last Thursday, so. All right, thank you Superintendent Lennox. At this time, we'll move on to item seven dot one, updates. Jim, would you like to give us an AMSD legislative update?
Yes, the AMSD met last Friday. We had some visitors from the House Education Policy Committee, our own Sandra Fies from New Brighton, and Ben Bakberg. We discussed a lot about the READ Act, and that's the new statewide reading program that the state has mandated to us, and we spoke a lot about implementations and the challenges of mandates, and how we often need a little more time for certain things, and we discussed some other policy issues too, from school safety to everyone's favorite, the bus, if you're too close, you have to pay for the bus. So all sorts of fun stuff. We also had a presentation, there's a new department at the state called Children, Youth, and Families, and they're taking a lot of the program somewhere in HHS Education and some other departments, and they're merging them together, try to get a department at the state that's more focused for children and support them, so we don't have something over here, over here, over here, and over here. We had a nice presentation from the Assistant Director of Transition, Aaron Doan, who is from Shoreview, and so we learned about that. And so, and we continued to discuss our educational policies, we are searching for a little more funding for the READ Act, and a little more funding for school safety initiatives that we have down at the Capitol, still a long way to go down there, not like last year where there was a lot of budget increases. The budgets are pretty tight this year, so we have to be aware of that. So thank you very much.
Thank you Jim, and I just want to thank you for representing and getting all that information to bring back to us as a school board, so thank you. All right, Shauna, would you like to give a nine sixteen update?
Yeah, so nine sixteen, school board met last week on Wednesday, and relatively speaking, it was a short meeting, pretty routine as far as the business that we had to conduct. I guess one of the updates was we had a presentation from the Assistant Superintendent regarding some of the grants that nine sixteen received this, the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So I can just highlight those, they have a grant called Project Aware, which is for professional development for staff around mental health. So they were given just right around two million dollars to do some work around mental health, which is fantastic. That's a five-year grant, and they're currently in year three of that grant. They have a grant for teacher membership, they had a grant for non-exclusionary discipline, so that was a two-year grant. We're in the second year of that grant, but trying to come up with alternatives to having kids stay at home, more restorative kinds of things. And then they had a grant, a five-year grant that was shared by all four of the intermediate school districts to try to recruit and retain more special education teachers. But overall, very routine meeting and nothing else to share.
All right, thank you, and thanks to you as well for bringing those updates back to us. All right, next is item eight dot one, school board member reports. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share?
Well, on a snowy Saturday, I went up to Chippewa to see the community ed summer offerings, and a lot of families were up there, and it's really exciting. We do offer a lot of stuff, from Legos to robotics, to chess club, to a whole lot of things to keep your kids busy. Just want to note to the parents out there that you still can sign up, and there's a lot of cool things to do. Would also like to note on April twentieth, coming up on a Saturday at Mounds View, one of my favorite, our Native American students have their powwow, and it's one of my favorite things to go to all year, I never miss it. And springtime is an exciting time, and there's a lot of celebrations going on, and I'd like to note that a lot of our children, a lot of our students are students of faith, and I'd like to wish the, our Christian students a very, I hope they had a very happy Holy Week and a happy Easter. Passover is coming up very soon for our Jewish students, and tonight is the end of Ramadan, and I'd like to wish our Muslim students Eid Mubarak, so thank you.
Thank you Jim.
I had the opportunity on Saturday afternoon to go to chalkboard capers. Saturday afternoon is always a fun one because they do a raffle for the elementary kids, so they're just like calling off names, like hundreds of names. Like, they say not everybody gets a prize, but I would argue that everyone that was there got a prize. Like, they were giving away tons of prizes, but it's a great little variety show that our teachers do, and it was, the kids love it because they love to see their teachers singing and dancing and playing in the band, and it was fantastic as always, a really good time. Edgewood had their fifth grade parents, sixth grade, going into sixth grade, their parent information night last night, so they are getting ready to welcome the next group of sixth graders, which is super exciting. And the fifth graders at Sunnyside today did a really cool cardboard carnival, so they spent a couple days making carnival games out of cardboard. And then the whole fifth grade just went around, and students played the carnival game of their classmates, and it sounded like it was like the greatest thing ever.
A good time had by all.
A good time had by all.
That's very creative.
Yeah.
Very creative.
Well, and I would just like to thank the community members and staff, the administration, that all attended the Partnering for Education luncheon last week that the foundation hosted. I was able to attend, and it was a really fantastic event. I got to learn more about the foundation and the great work that they do, so that was really, really interesting, it was fun, and just a great time to gather with fellow community members. We'll have another great opportunity to connect again when the foundation hosts Rock the Schoolhouse, I will give a little shout out, so people can plan for that on November ninth. But yeah, just wanted to make sure I gave them some recognition, because I know there was a lot of work that was put into hosting that, and it was a really phenomenal event to just make sure community members know the great work the foundation does to support our schools and our district, so really appreciate that. And then I also want to wish the Muslim students, families, and community members out there, I hope that you guys really enjoy celebrating Eid with your family and community members, starting tonight and going into tomorrow, especially with the day off that you'll have, so wanted to give a special recognition for that, since I think this is the second year, right, that you'll be able to celebrate with families. And I know we've had a lot of really positive feedback from the community in terms of just feeling as though they belong, you know, with that acknowledgement, so wanted to make sure we acknowledge that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else?
I found a new favorite activity to watch.
Uh-oh.
And I might, I'm just, I gotta represent our Irondale Nightcrawlers. I got to go to the ten K Lakes Regional Competition on Saturday, was there for like five hours, because just the, if you've not ever been to a robotics competition, it is the coolest thing in the world, there's like lights, and music, and everything, and action, and they're driving these robots like ninety miles an hour. And I got to sit next to a very proud Nightcrawler dad, who filled me in about, you know, the amazing organization really of, I mean, they have a marketing team, and they've got, it's amazing what all they do to put these robots together and to compete. I did also get to see the Mounds View robotics team compete as well, so you know, give me a T-shirt and I'll wear it too. But the Nightcrawlers will be going to Houston in a couple of weeks here for Worlds, which is literally Worlds, like it's the teams from all over the world that come and compete. So yeah, it was wild, it was so fun, and so you've got a permanent fan in me, and I'll be back as a Nightcrawler fan.
I don't know, have we ever had a prop, like?
No, I mean, that was amazing.
That was, yeah.
I mean.
But it is the Nightcrawlers who do it, remember, they brought the robot.
They brought the robot years ago.
Yeah, two years ago.
I'm just following suit.
If anybody does it, it's the Nightcrawlers.
Yes.
Yeah. Pretty amazing. Do you have any updates? Okay, as a couple mentioned, I also was at the Partnering for Education lunch, just want to give a huge shout out to the community, the sponsoring partners and so forth. The alumni, Stacy Hu came and spoke was amazing, it was nice to hear her story from graduating from Mounds View High School, and her going on to college, and where she is with her career, so thank you. All right, so if there is nothing else to come before the board, we are adjourned.